Call this regular meeting to work overall.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the council meetings.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are the United States of America, the Republic of America, and the nation of God. In the presence of the Lord.
Any further comments tonight? We start off. Okay, we'll go to the approval of minutes to council member Newman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on May 21st, 2018.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now we'll go to the approval invoices to city clerk Nelson.
In the Department of the Council and Finances, we have bills this period totaling forty-five thousand, forty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have bills totaling two-hundred-and-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and eight cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have bills totaling two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents. And finally, in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have bills totaling three-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twelve cents. Mayor, all council members have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
Now will we accept the invoices as presented?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We're now going to go into regular business with city clerk Nelson in these first two ordinances, number six and number seven. We're gonna do the first one, we'll ask for a second. If it's second, then we will discuss both it and ordinance number seven as well. And then we will come back and vote on the first one, number six, and then on the second one, number seven.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance O-18-12, an ordinance of the City of Princeton authorizing execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement with Princeton High School District 500 for certain property located at 16 East Railroad Avenue. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it's submitted for disposition.
I'd like to make a motion that we advance ordinance O-18-012 to the second reading.
Second.
Uh, motion's been seconded. And as a reminder on these two ordinances, all votes are needed for passage. So, motion has been seconded. Comments?
I'll go first. Um, okay, I'd like to thank both for submitting proposals. Um, I will be favoring Princeton High School. Um, they are going to be putting in two-hundred-thousand dollars in repairs to an absolute eyesore that is entering our city. Um, the high school has been after this building for several years. We will be paid immediately for the hundred-and-four-thousand, eight-hundred if we reduce the money to fix up the two buildings that is needed to store the electric company. And, um, I know with the other bid, it would be putting the building on the tax roll. But my feeling for that is, um, I think we overlook what the high school does for our academy, um, from school supply beginning of the year to restaurant business for sporting events, away and home games, um, gas stations, building up hanks, getting refreshments, chips, to booking our hotels on the weekends, uh, PIT tournaments, to homecoming, to prom, graduation parties. Um, they are also partnering with local businesses for those kids that do not decide to go to college to immediately enter a trade field and stay in town in Princeton. Um, not only that, they also require twenty-four service hours upon graduation. So we're looking at every single class is putting a minimum, and I know I'm cutting this short, of twenty-four-hundred dollars, twenty-four hundred hours of community service into our community. Um, so, and that being a taxing body, also, I will be favoring the high school.
I'm gonna basically echo what Laura said. I am also going to favor the high school's purchase of this building. I, uh, think it's a good way for the city to extend an olive branch to another government entity and show that we can work with our other government entities. So I support this. And I also really love that you guys are gonna redo the entire outside of the building. That's one of the main reasons. We were looking to sell this building in the first place because of the eyesoreness and the amount of money it would take to fix up.
Uh, yeah, I guess, I've got several questions. Uh, I don't think anything is gonna change in terms of the contribution that the high school makes if they don't acquire this building. I mean, they're still gonna continue to be a great institution, and all these kids are gonna continue to do all these great things for our community, and people will still buy chips and hotel rooms and all that other stuff. The repairs, we've, the city's owned the building for years. Why we haven't repaired it is we, we just haven't. And, uh, it's still standing, it's still in good shape, and we have two people that are interested in doing something positive with this building. I support selling the building to a commercial entity. I believe that putting it on the tax rolls is gonna contribute greatly to the schools, all the schools. It's gonna contribute to the I.R.M.R.F. pensions, the police pension and the fire pension. It's gonna contribute to the coming through the bureau, I'm sorry, through, through property taxes. I, I don't know why we wouldn't want to do what's in the best interest of the community and that is put this building in the hands of a commercial enterprise. There's gonna be jobs, there's gonna be a major utility bill as a result of this guy heating and lighting this facility and employing people. Uh, we stand to gain about fourteen-thousand dollars in interest from providing a five-year loan for him to buy this building. And while we're getting loan payments, we can certainly begin fixing up the two buildings that need to be fixed up. So, I see no reason why this building, if it goes to a commercial property, is gonna harm the school in any way. I think the school has options. It's a bus barn. We think that it should be a commercial enterprise right down the street from where this Premier Industries is gonna be located in. Premier Industries has agreed to clean up and fix up and paint the exterior of the building. I think it's a no-brainer. I think we need to do what's in the best interest of the community, and what the community wants is do business, and that's what this is.
I'd like to add, um, give you a little background. I would turn about the high school and give you a little background on the other bid, which is from Premier Products. Cody Grand Adam is an inventor and the CEO of Premier Products, which is a manufacturer of flashlights. Uh, they are located in the West Fox Building in Peru. Um, they, uh, it's a startup business. They now distribute to more than one-hundred-thousand retailers nationwide. They've created, uh, more than a half a dozen other businesses in the process. Premier has been featured on Good Morning America's Deals and Steals, and Cody has marketed his product on the Home Shopping Network. Uh, Premier Products just, uh, last week closed on the Innis Building out on Red Road Avenue, that's the big blue building across the street from LCN. That was a purchase that they have been working on. Uh, Premier is now interested, obviously, in the, and they contacted us and was looking for more space because they're already outgrowing what they've got at Premier. Um, they are the owners of, Cody is the CEO of Acubo, S&amp;S Tool and Dye, Service Pros, Premier Products, Premier Properties, Unwind Day Spa, TNT Hydraulic Hose, and he's in the process of opening two more businesses, a brick oven pizza, and the West Fox Building, and Event Center. Um, you know, when giving sole consideration to what is in the overall best interest of the City of Princeton and its taxpayers, the only choice in my opinion is to sell to Premier. Um, we are elected to perform and provide for the best interest of the city as a whole. And between these two offers, the one from Premier is in the best interest of the town overall. Not only coming in property tax revenue, the jobs it'll create, um, he's gonna be, you know, improving the interior of the building immediately, installing bathrooms, insulation, all-new lighting. He's gonna have employees in there year-round. Um, he's already looked at other business buildings here in town, uh, looking for a third spot. Uh, unfortunately, if this does not go through, I don't know what that means for the process going forward. Um, I like that the high school wants to put two-hundred-thousand dollars into the building. Um, my own honest opinion is that I don't think that does much for the city other than providing an attractive building on Main Street. We've been improving Main Street, uh, for the last three years. I think we're doing a very good job of it. Um, and the building and the exterior will be, uh, improved as well shortly. I got it actually heard from Cody today, and, uh, just to let us know that, uh, he is going to be repainting or fixing the exterior almost immediately if the building should come to him. Uh, and he also said, uh, simply, that how much of his operation moves here at Princeton is solely dependent on how much space he can secure here. So as I say, I just, uh, from an economic development standpoint, I agree with, uh, with Jerry. I think it is a no-brainer that we should sell to Premier.
Mayor, if I could ask, is, are the representatives, I know, I take Cody's not here tonight, but are the representatives able to speak just for a moment? Mr. Herring's here. Can he speak on behalf of the high school?
Sure, absolutely. If he wants.
Do you mind if we, we'd like to hear just a little bit about what your thoughts are on your plans? I know we got it in writing, but, and also, I'd like to know, how many people does high school employ and things like that? Because I consider the high school to be its own little small industry, generating graduates that we enjoy to stay in the area, some of them go on to, to other things. So if you could just give us a couple minutes, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, do you wanna go up to the microphone, Kirk? Thanks. Just slide the thing on the top deck for you. There's a little button on top of you, just slide it for you. There you go. Testing one, two, we're good. Well, I'll start off first with thanks for considering our proposal. Obviously, as Laura had said earlier, we've been after this building for a long time, well before Rachel came to town. Um, and basically, our sole purpose of looking to acquire this building was gonna be twofold. One, I think it's been said, it's the biggest eyesore we have in town. It's at, it's at the entrance to our town. A town that's beautiful. But we have an ugly building there that has for years been left to decay. And, you know, it is what it is. So, we look at it as an opportunity, for those of you who don't know, we park all of our buses behind our high school. If you've been around there during bus time, before and after school, during events, getting buses in and out of that school is very difficult. It obviously causes issues for our neighbors and for our bus drivers, but we've made it work for a long time, so we'll be able to continue to make it work for an extended period of time as well. But when the proposals came out, request for proposals, we saw it as a great opportunity to do two things. One, I think Ray had said it earlier, for local taxing bodies to work together. I think that's something we do not do enough of in this town. I've said that for, for many years. We've tried to work with other taxing bodies on other projects, and here was a prime opportunity for us to do this again. You have a facility that you don't need, from my understanding, don't really want, and it needs to be improved. So, we came up with a proposal to do that. Obviously, investing over three-hundred-thousand dollars after improvements in this was gonna be a win-win for the entire community. Um, once again, you know, if you move forward in another direction, we'll continue to make things work for Princeton High School, because we always have. Uh, you had asked how many people we employ. Uh, we employ over eighty people. Obviously, the majority of those people live in our community. Uh, our taxpayers obviously wanna see the same things that we do. Um, and if there are any other questions, I gladly answer them, but you have the proposal in front of you, and, you know, that's what we would be willing to do. I think one of the parts of the proposal that I think probably is unique as well is that we don't need this building tomorrow, or the next week. We'd be willing to work with you so that the electrical department could find a new facility. Jeff's been great showing us the building, and, you know, we wanna continue to partner with you guys because, once again, like I said, I think one of the things that we don't do enough of in Princeton is local taxing bodies working together for the betterment of our community. Any questions I can answer?
No, I appreciate you, uh, you speaking, and, uh, again, your proposal is, is top-notch, and I totally agree with what you wanna do with the building. Uh, my perspective again is, uh, a commercial endeavor, and actually, our, our RFP that we put out stated exploring commercial endeavors, so that's what, uh, Premier fits into, from my perspective.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I could then make just a quick comment. So, we really wish we had two buildings tonight to sell, one to Premier Products and one to Princeton High School, but that's not the case. I'll be supporting the high school. I know that, I've been on the council now for about six years, and I know that the high school has acquired a couple of different times about the building, specifically about the building. I know we've heard about that unofficially, maybe through, uh, council members, and they've acquired, and it really, I don't know if we ever really had officially for sale. I know there was another entity that looked at it, uh, kind of unofficially, uh, and then it was decided to go ahead and have requests for proposals. At that point, I know the high school then was able to jump in there and offer what they offered. So I will be supporting the high school on this. I think, I think the high school is, and I echo what Ray Swanson said, is they're our cousins, so to speak. I mean, just like the library, when they needed some extra help with, uh, supporting the, uh, the taxes being increased on their, their, um, levy, um, if the hospital needs a little help, uh, we're there to support them, the park districts. So, we're, we're very pleased that we have a new industry coming to Princeton, and we don't want that person to think that we're sliding them, but that person has to understand that the high school's been looking at this for a couple of years, and I really think we need to support our high school. So, Kirk, thanks for your addressing those comments, but I will be supporting this project a hundred percent for the high school, and I'm hoping, unfortunately, we're not gonna have enough members to make this work tonight, to swing this, but maybe in two weeks, maybe there'll be members that'll decide to go along with high school's proposal. My, my thoughts. Thank you.
I think, I think we have an operation. I think we're all put in these seats by the taxpayers to do what is necessary to improve life here in Princeton and make sound decisions based on good information. We have an opportunity to bring tax revenue, jobs, and, uh, a much better, a, a large company to this community, and we would rather turn them away and offer the school something that they need granted. But I just think that this building is best used as a commercial environment. I mean, isn't that the first question? What's in the best interest of the community? What's in the best interest is to generate jobs, revenue, economic development. That's what this building will do. Plain and simple. The bus barn, again, no complaints, they need to house the buses. But this is not, this is not the time to turn away a brand-new business coming to town, looking for space, looking to expand, looking to make a home here in Princeton with this new emerging business, with a very creative guy at the helm, and we say, no, we can't help you. It doesn't make sense to me.
And, and also, you know, the state of Illinois, you know, businesses are leaving the state of Illinois. We need to go, we need to go looking for Premier. They gave to us, and, and we're saying, thanks, but no thanks. You know, I, and this, this thing, and I, you know, I generally don't like to do things like this, but I think, you know, we have to look back at when, uh, when our most previous elections, and what did the candidates up here say about economic development? What did they write? You know, Laura, uh, your words, "Economic growth is the key to building a strong city." The entrepreneurs are out there, we just have to find them. Again, we didn't find Premier, they found us. We must remain diligent in our efforts to attract companies to relocate to Princeton, resulting in property tax revenue and jobs. Sale and property tax revenue plus jobs equals a strong Princeton. And your position tonight is counter to what you said three years ago.
Mayor, I understand economic growth and how you, how much you want it now, but three years ago, you also put a stop to TCI.
TCI would have cost the city over one million dollars, city money to bring that, brought that business to Princeton. I'm not, that's exactly right, I was against spending over one million dollars to bring that business to Princeton. And it was, uh, it was a bad deal for Princeton, period. That's behind us, we move forward. This project doesn't cost the City of Princeton anything.
Okay, we can agree to disagree on that, but to continue on Mr. Herring's occupancy, um, we would have to vacate this building immediately. When I asked where are we going to get the money to improve the buildings that we need to get the electric company in tomorrow, I did not and will not approve the answer that I received. And that answer was to go into our research.
Would we be getting income from Premier when they burnst the building? That could go toward improvements of, of the old recycling center and the Oakland Cemetery Building.
There is no doubt, Mayor.
Oh, and Mr. Herring making payments to us. How frequently I have payments, Rachel, you know, I'll hand up this.
No, that would have to be decided in that proposal.
Okay, all right. But for, but for five years, he would be making payments to the city, and in that fifth year, he would pay off his debt.
Correct.
And also, um, Ray Swanson, you know, you, um, you made comments as well in public, as far as economic development, of what you were telling the residents of Princeton. Uh, you wrote, "I really wanna see us hit economic development harder on all levels. I think it's extremely important for the city, the schools, and all the taxing bodies. I'm an optimist, I think economic development can happen on different scales." And then you listed top three goals. Your number-one goal was economic development on all levels. As a city, we need to grow. We need to be extremely competitive to be on top in order to gain new industry and business. Our neighboring cities want growth also, so when we have an opportunity, we must remember we can either be aggressive and roll out the welcome map, or watch them go on down the road like we have in the past. People and taxing bodies are struggling. Economic development will help us, help us all, more jobs, more tax revenue, increased sales, new opportunities, more visitors to Princeton, along with numerous other great things. And your position, obviously, tonight, again, is counter to what you said just a year and a half ago.
I'm glad you all researched that so fully, Mayor. That's great. Um, yes, I do support economic development. I've always supported economic development. As you said, Cody closed on a building, so I don't think he's gonna turn around and leave here right now, and I think for warehousing, he is definitely going to find something else in the area, if not build something. Warehousing at times isn't so much employees as employees are in the building he just bought. This is more of a storage facility, the way I understood it.
Distribution center and warehousing. So this is all the, all the product that comes from China comes to Princeton, at least hopefully, and then it goes out to Princeton across the country. So, you know, economic development is everything that we have been doing in Princeton in the last three years, everything we've been doing on Main Street, you know, you know, with our parks, the trees, the tremendous growth we've seen on Main Street, everything that we've been doing has been designed to bring people to town, our tourism efforts, bring people to town, bring business and industry to town. And now tonight, we're saying, thanks, but no thanks. And it makes no sense to me.
If I could, Mayor, I, I know we're, we don't wanna pit the two together. We, we are tickled that Cody's coming to town, we, we are, we're pleased. Um, the high school has been looking at this building for a couple of years, and, um, so it's not, and when, uh, Premier Products was looking and coming to Princeton, I know this started probably a year ago or nine months ago, nowhere on the radar was, I hope that the city didn't promise in this building, that wasn't promised to him, so he didn't know this building was available till the past couple of months. So, you know, he made a decision to come to town, and when, you know, I don't want him to feel like now we already have a council that's anti-growth, because that's not the case. I think that, I think that we need to work with our existing taxing bodies, we need to work with the high school on this project that they've been looking at for a couple of years now and move forward with it.
No, I've never seen anything from the school that says we want that building. Where was that information? Was it ever quickly, uh, sent to Rachel? Was there a bid sent to Rachel two years ago from the school saying we want that building?
I can, I can address that if you'd like. It's been a lot more than two years. It's been a lot more than two years ago. It started with a conversation that I had with Ray, wanting to look at some buildings in town for the potential for a bus barn. And I'm gonna say that was probably four or five years ago, Ray. We went out and looked at the old Sullivan's Building, if you remember correctly. And then we looked at a building, um, that at one time is hardware-owned, and those buildings did not need our facility. As soon as Rachel became city manager, I immediately contacted her and said that if you guys were ever interested in getting rid of the, what is now considered the electrical building, we'd be very interested in acquiring that building. So to say that this hasn't been on the books, or this hasn't been talked about, that's a true, that is not true at all.
It's not, it's not come before the council, is what we're saying.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, is that there's conversations that have been going on, and I can go back and I can get the emails if you'd like, that I had with Rachel, and I was under the impression that the rest of the council had, had at least been informed that we'd be interested if that building ever became available.
I'd say that there's been comments made, but nothing.
And I will say this, we've continuously inquired about the building. On a yearly basis, I ask about the building. So, we have continuously asked about, but this isn't just something that we thought about a year or two ago, this has been going on for a long time.
Yeah, Kirk and I have discussed it, and we've looked at it, most recently you had with Jeff, but when I first got here, we looked at it together.
And we looked at it with Jeff that day, and we stood out in the cold, and we froze for a while, if I remember correctly.
That's right, and I had heels on, yeah. Um, but I think, uh, you know, once we looked at the process and knew there were multiple interested parties, talking to John, RFP was the way we had to go, and that's when we got the official proposal.
All right. Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, go ahead, Jerry. Laura? Ethan?
No.
All right, well, we'll go to the item number six then, and it's been second, so we will call roll. Uh, that's the high school.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
No.
Mayor Querom.
No.
And now we'll go to the next ordinance.
Okay, the next ordinance is, uh, ordinance number O-18-13, an ordinance of the City of Princeton authorizing execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement with Premier Products for certain property located at 16 East Railroad Avenue, Princeton. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we advance at the second reading ordinance O-18-013.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
No.
Avery.
No.
Fabia.
No.
Newman.
Yes. What a shame this building's gonna sit and no one's gonna be able to.
Mayor Querom.
Yes. Deal.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. As the clerk shuffles the papers towards the table. Uh, we have ordinance number O-18-014. This is an ordinance of the City of Princeton providing for borrowing of, not to exceed $2.95 million from Central Bank, Illinois, for the purpose of advanced refunding is twenty, uh, oh, sorry, yeah, 2013 C, general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, and partial reimbursement of a U.S. EDA grant number O-6-79-05501. Mayor, the council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we advance ordinance O-18-014 to the second reading. This ordinance provides for borrowing of $2.9 million, two, uh, for refunding on a general obligation, um, and also repay an EDA grant.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel.
Sure. So, uh, this is a current bond that we already have, this is an additional $2.9 million that we're borrowing. This is a refunding of that, an advanced refunding of that bond, and this is the bond that was originally taken out for land purchase at, at the logistics park. We have to do an advanced refunding of this per IRS regulations, making it a taxable bond, not a non-taxable bond, um, 'cause currently it's non-taxable, and based on the cash rent and the potential sale of land out there, it has to be a taxable bond. So that's why we're doing the advanced refunding for this. We, um, worked with the local banks to get a good rate for this, and Central Bank is who we'll be working with, um, on the refunding. There are some amounts that are left blank, as you'll see in the ordinance, but those will be entered before the second reading. We have to wait on the SLGs to come in before we can enter all of those. Are there any questions?
We've got it. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-18-015. This is the first reading of this ordinance, which is an ordinance providing for borrowing of not to exceed $450,000 from Central Bank Illinois for the purpose of funding street improvements and purchase of equipment. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we advance ordinance O-18-015 to the second reading. This ordinance provides borrowing net for an amount not to exceed $450,000 for street improvements and equipment.
Second.
Motion is the second. I'll turn it over to Rachel.
So this item, we discussed briefly at our budget meetings pre, or earlier this year. So part of our street improvement program, including some of the improvements to Miles Quarter, the water sewer work that we'll be doing there this year, will be done for a short-term loan, largely because we're looking at building back up our MST accounts so we can use those funds down the road and be able to do more street improvement. So this is to not exceed $450,000. Once again, we get bids from all the local banks, you know, Central Bank was the lowest interest rate on this one as well.
Any further comment? Motion has been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the second and final reading of ordinance O-18-010, authorizing a settlement agreement with a member of the Princeton Fire Department. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance O-18-010, which is authorizing a settlement, a settlement agreement for a member of the Princeton Fire Department.
Second.
Motion's been second. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the second and final reading of ordinance O-18-011, authorizing a sales tax referendum. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance O-18-011, which is authorizing a sales referendum.
Second.
Motion's been second. I'll turn this over to, no, I won't. Any comment? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution R-18-027. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Metropolitan Pump Company for a SCADA system upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution R-18-027, authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Metropolitan Pump Company.
Second.
Motion's been second. I'll turn it over to Rachel.
So this was also one of our capital projects for the Wayne's Water Department that was discussed during our budget meetings. This is for a SCADA system upgrade and Tim's here if you have any specific questions about it, but basically it'll allow us, I think if I get this right, to put all the list stations, you know, all into the same system so we can be automatically notified of those events and don't have to wait for someone to call in a red flashing light or something, so.
Any comments? Anyone think for Tim? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution R-18-028, approving, this is, I'm sorry, this is approving the amendments to the City of Princeton Employee Benefits Handbook and the City of Princeton Personnel Manual. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-18-028, which is a process of updating the personnel and benefit manuals.
Second.
Motion has been second. Any comments? Over to Rachel, actually.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. So during our union negotiations that we finalized, there were a few changes that needed to be made to the personnel manual and benefit manual to include those manuals, updated manuals, in the new contracts. Most of the changes are really, Mayor, I have a list here if you're interested in it, but I'll go through a few of them really quick. So we had, we added a mandatory EAP for the drug and alcohol policy. We updated the jury duty language. We revised the language a little bit under light duty where work is meaningful. We added the word meaningful there. We updated the performance review section to say that the performance reviews would be done by supervisors and department heads. Cell phone usage, we updated that a little bit to cover employees when they're using their personal phones for city business. And the travel reimbursement policy, we updated that just regarding taking out the per diem and putting in the detailed receipts. And I think that's about it. Anyone have any questions?
Comments? It's been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-18-029. This is a resolution awarding the annual street maintenance contract to advance asphalt for the low bid of $355,859.55. Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-18-029, which approves the bids for the annual street maintenance with the asphalt.
Second.
Motion's been second. I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Thank you. So this is for our street maintenance program for this year. Advanced ones, the only bidder, and they are the low bidder for this project. And I passed out a list of streets prior to that. The quantities on that, you know, I passed out are not correct, but the streets are. If there's any questions.
Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Yes, I'll go to the city manager report. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, so, sorry, I have the monthly financial report. This is through April 2018, so it closes out the fiscal year, but these are unaudited numbers as we are currently working on the audit. But like I said, it's before the end of our fiscal year, so if you look at the first page, unaudited numbers, revenue was at 105%, expense at 98%, and then there's detailed information in the report on each fund. And then the only other thing I'll note about this report is the back page where we usually have the police insider activity. That's only the few times reported for this month, so I'll make sure we include those others too next month. I missed that. Apologize about that. And then the second thing I wanted to, are there any questions on the report? The next thing I wanted to mention briefly is that we have successfully completed a website update earlier in May, so it's been live for about a month now and we worked with Brian Bondegras on that. And he just, he did a really great job meeting all of our needs and our expectations for that website to make it a lot more user-friendly and giving residents the information they need. So a lot of credit goes to him and working hard on that for us.
Now, the website is really, really nice, runs smoothly, easy to navigate, like Rachel said, extremely user-friendly, so it's good to see that up and running. Anybody have any comments? Okay, thank you, Rachel. We have one item tonight, entertain reappointments to the Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees. I make a motion that we approve the reappointment to the Princeton Public Library Board of[1703.13]